The adequate notice of this regular meeting is required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This notice was on those dates posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News, and tapped into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in rising for the pledge.
I believe this is in the flag of the United States of America. In the republic, which is dense, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the roll. Mr. DeSey?
You.
Mrs. Fightbomb?
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Tor?
Here.
Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mrs. Zon?
Here.
Mr. Brizzi?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting.
Second.
Shall I call the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. DeSey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fightbomb?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zon?
Yes.
Mr. Brizzi?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
The board received thirteen emails, eight were related to the eighth grade trip, three related to the FY twenty-four budget, and two on a variety of issues. There was one HIB investigation at Central School, which did not meet the requirements to be considered an HIB. And we reported four suspensions, two of them were students that had a combination in and out of school suspension at Central and two out of school suspensions at Woodland.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening, whether in person or remote. Uh, we are the wonderful Woodland Library, and I will say the last time I was here was just a few short weeks ago for the expressive reading showcase. I can't do it as nearly as good as the children do. Um, but it's certainly always good to be at Woodland and always good to be here for um the showcase that they do. It is amazing. Uh, that was for Read Across America Day. I also had the opportunity to read in Mr. Yennis's fifth grade classroom. So thank you to them as well, and certainly thank you for, while I was in here, I happened to see this matrix of events that happens at Woodland on any given day. And I think the, the, there was like a culmination of the end. I think it involved uh the principal, Mr. Heaney, in the gym. It looked like there was a little surprise there. Um, but what, what a tremendous amount of planning and the kids all came home, you know, smiling and happy and I, it was just amazing to see. Uh, so certainly thank you for all the behind the scenes work. Thank you for the invitation to, to, to be able to join you. And then from here, I think I went home briefly and then I ended up at Mount Horab to, uh, I think there was, we had a special guest there that day uh who also read to the students. So thank you to the Mount Horab staff for that opportunity as well. Um, I do want to call your, call the board's attention to item C one. We have a couple, you know, new joiners to our team, which is always nice to see. So we certainly hope they are as excited to be with us as they, as we are to have them. Uh, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Brizzi. Just a couple of quick things for me, uh, joining uh with Mr. Brizzi. Thank you to all the members of the board and community at large that participated in Read Across America Day across the elementary schools. Uh, it is a, a fun day. We were unexpectedly happy to welcome the acting commissioner as well to Mount Horab School where she read with a couple of classes and it was uh a nice day all around for sure. And our, our school librarians do a phenomenal job that day and every day, but especially on that day, putting together really dynamic experiences for all of our students. I also would like to highlight some students who won the recent uh sixth grade mock trial competition. Uh, first place in the New Jersey State Bar Foundation's Law Fair. They will now, this, this was online. They will now move to an in-person competition at the state level in May. Dr. Cooper is the advisor to that program. And uh, we've started receiving a couple of questions about the school calendar. Obviously, we all know we have not used any snow days at this point. Uh, barring any unforeseen late March blizzards, which happen every once in a while. We would expect to update the calendar at the next meeting, which is on April twenty-fourth. It is our typical practice that the meeting after spring break is when we adjust it. And our normal practice is to take the days off the end of the year that are not used from snow days. So that's what I would assume uh is what we would be talking about a month from now, but it'll be final once we have that April twenty-fourth meeting. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. And a bit of an oversight on my part, I apologize. I do also want to draw the board's attention to item B six on the agenda. This is a donation from the Warren Baseball and Softball Incorporated, and certainly very much appreciate their donation to the district for this cause. So thank you very much to the Warren Baseball and Softball Incorporated. And with that, we will move on to our presentations. We will turn it over to Mr. Heaney for the Woodland Student Feature.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome the Warren Township School Board of Education, Dr. Mingle, Mr. Hegel, and the members of the Warren community at Woodland School, the home of the woodchuck. I'd also like to wish everyone a very happy first day of spring, and I hope that you feel like we have captured the goal of bringing the outdoors indoors in our park-themed library, which is not set up like this normally. Today, we have Mrs. McGrath and two Woodland students who'll be sharing some of the fun and excitement that we experienced here on March second, and that's Read Across America Day. Over the past two years at Woodland School, we've been working hard to promote literacy through active student engagement and have been working to create strong human connections through the power of a good book. The work of our Read Across America Day highlights some of the things we are doing and was due to Mrs. McGrath's infectious dedication, combined with the amazing efforts of the students and staff at Woodland. During the presentation tonight, you will see events such as the expressive reading, in which students in grades three through five demonstrated their reading and presentation skills. Film festivals, in which grade five students actually made real live video trailers to get their younger student friends excited about a book. Seuss-ville activities, where the amazing work of Dr. Seuss came to life in interactive games played during gym class. Guest readers, where so many of our guests around Warren shared, shared a great book with the class. A reader's theater, where students put on, or where staff put on a play from a book for the entire school. And reading crafts, where students made fun book, fun bookmarks and other crafts to go with their book. And they even had therapy dogs, which was one of my favorite parts of the day, where students read to one of three special canine friends. Students even got to pair with their book buddy, which is a school-wide monthly event run by Mrs. McGrath, in which an older student is paired with a younger student to become buddies throughout the course of the year and share in reading and just express the importance of being together. It truly was a special day, and one of the best parts was watching the kids enjoy reading without even knowing they were doing it. With that said, I introduce our school librarian and the organizer of all things reading, Mrs. McGrath.
Wow, that was, that was pretty much summed it all up. Uh, in the library, we consider the library here at Woodland School the hub of everything in our building. In the last few years, we've made it our goal to really make collaborative opportunities for children to grow their community and their literacy skills, from things like the kindergarten rhyme time and first graders' reading is no much fun event. And through library events that we build up to Read Across America Day. So we wanted to give you a little snapshot of our day. Now, Mr. Brizzi said he was here, so you may, you might pop up in the video. I don't know. I, I do know you're in it. Um, so without further ado, I would like to share with you a short video, and then I would like to introduce you to some of our readers today. So. Read Across America Day is an annual day at Woodland School in which we celebrate all things reading.
The expressive reading showcase is in its sixth year. Students in grades three to five auditioned, chose reading passages, practiced with a staff member, and shared their reading pieces with students and parents.
Our third grade students spent time with visiting therapy dogs. These furry friends enjoyed listening to us read. Some dog petting and hugging were an added bonus.
Some wonderful students from Moore Middle School came to read a book and let our kindergarteners in a craft. Students, big and small, had a great time.
Let's double mute us.
What are we listening to? Like old music?
Have fun while making reading-themed crafts.
In the weeks leading up to the film festival, our fifth graders chose a book to transform and produce into a book movie trailer. We then shared our films with younger grades to advertise books in our very own library.
We had many guest readers share the love of reading with our students. Some special guests was here, including Mr. Brizzi, Mr. Sincletary, and the Warren Police.
All students got active in our Shrewsbill-themed physical education class.
All students got to spend some reading time with their book friends.
Our day would not be complete without the reading train, games, reader's theater, and a reading celebration.
At Woodland, we celebrate reading every day.
So I hope you enjoyed that little snapshot into our day, and uh it is definitely one of the biggest events that we do each year at Woodland School. Uh, I have two friends with me today who are going to share a little bit of the expressive reading showcase with you. A little over six years ago, I had a fifth grader of my own. I have four kids at home and one was a fifth grader that year. And a little backstory about that child in particular, um, my son is dyslexic and reading never really came easy for him. So it was always a bit of a force-feeding of the reading to him, which is, you know, interesting because I'm a librarian. And uh, he decided he was gonna try out for something called the expressive reading competition. And in the district we went to, he auditioned and he got to represent his school. And they only picked five kids, and then they went on and they competed against other schools within the district. He didn't go on to winning the whole thing, but it was at that point in time where he had this opportunity to shine. It, at that point, he was still young. He was not, you know, the star of the football team. He was not, you know, getting the gold medal in swimming. Uh, he was still just a fifth grader. And that day was like his Super Bowl. So I got, when I remember watching him perform, I was in awe that my child, who was a late reader, had this beautiful piece that he shared expressively in a way that was very moving. So, um, we decided to bring it here to Woodland because I wanted other kids to have that opportunity, kids to give that, kids to have that opportunity to shine, where maybe it's not always that opportunity they get. So it has developed over the years, and this year we had thirty students that, um, well, we had about eighty students audition. And thirty kids, ten from each grade, third, fourth, and fifth grade, uh, were selected to participate. And those students, we have two here, they're two fifth graders. They, uh, once they auditioned, they had to choose a passage, and then they were given a mentor in the building. We put all thirty names out there and within a half hour, every staff member sent, set up to be a mentor, a coach to a student, where they met at lunchtime or during win, and they practiced so they would build fluency and expression. And at the end, on Read Across America Day, they had their opportunity to present it between, in front of their peers, in addition to their families. So today, we have two people in, Fukundo, did you say you were going first? Okay, Fukundo is going first. He is reading a Pete the Cat book. And why don't you come on up here?
Down, leave that there. Ready? Get yourself set up. Want to test it? Make sure it's ready. Good? We'll get out of the background.
Pete the Cat, rock on, Mom and Dad. It's Monday morning and Pete the Cat wakes up only to realize he's already running late for school. His alarm didn't go off. Oh, no. This is definitely not how Pete wanted to start out the week. But he does not worry at all. He quickly gets dressed and he knows his parents are here for him. When he gets downstairs, Dad has already prepared breakfast. Better not skip breakfast. It's the most important meal of the day, Dad says. Pete chows down on his cereal. And then Pete gets ready to leave the house, but aren't you missing something? asks Mom. He almost forgot his backpack. Good thing Mom had it all ready for him. He rushes out to catch his bus just in time. And he's thankful to have his parents around to help him this morning. Pete knows that Mom and Dad do so much for him. After Pete gets home from school, Mom helps him practice baseball. Pete is getting better and better every day with her help. And Dad takes him to his guitar lessons every week so Pete can practice what he loves. Pete's favorite hobby is playing the guitar. Every day, Mom and Dad do a hundred little things, and Pete realizes that he's never really said thank you. So today, Pete is going to surprise Mom and Dad with something completely awesome. So Pete tries to think of the very best way to say thank you. He can make them dinner, except he would, he knows he would probably make a big mess in the kitchen. And Mom and Dad would end up helping him clean the kitchen instead. Not a good idea. He could pick them up a gate of flowers, except he's not sure what Mom and Dad's favorite flowers are. Pete thinks part. He could clean the house. Mom and Dad would love that. But last time he vacuumed, he broke a vase and almost broke a lamp. He could mow the lawn, as long as he remembers to mow the garden this time. Or he could change the owner of that car, but he was not too sure how to do that. That all seems nice, but it doesn't seem like enough. Pete really wants to do something special that they'll never, ever forget. He wants them to know how thankful he is to have them around. So Pete asks his big brother Bob for some, for some help. Pete is this smart, Bob is the smartest guy. He knows. Bob will know what to, what Pete should do. What can I do to tell Mom and Dad how much I love them? Pete asks. It doesn't matter what you do, Bob says, but it's how you do it. So as long as it's from the heart, Mom and Dad will totally dig it. That gives Pete an idea. He knows exactly what to do to show Mom and Dad how grateful he is. There is only one thing Pete can do better than any other cat he knows. Rock down! So Pete sits down and writes Mom and Dad a song. And soon, he's ready to perform the song, and it goes a little something like this. Mom and Dad, you are the best. I love you more than all the rest. Yeah, I do. I cannot count all the things you do. I know it's all because of you. Yes, it is that I love music and I love art. And I love you with all my heart. Yes, I do. Wow, that was awesome, says Dad. That's very sweet. We were not expecting this at all, says Mom. It is the best surprise ever!
Bet you didn't see the song in there coming. Woo, man of many talents. Uh, our next performer, come on up, Faith. Faith is actually going to be reading from the book, The Wild Robot. Peter Brown is coming to visit our school later this month, and she has prepared part of the first book out of three, which is The Wild Robot. This is the beginning. See how it begins.
Our story begins on the ocean with wind and rain and thunder and lightning and waves. A hurricane roar and rage through the night, and in the middle of the, the chaos, a cargo ship sank down, down, down to the ocean floor. The ships left hundreds of crates floating on the surface, but as hurricane thrashed and swirled and knocked them around, the crates sank into the depths. One afternoon another, they were swallowed up by waves until only five crates remained. By morning, the hurricane was gone. There was no clouds, no ships, no land in sight. There was only calm water, clear skies, and those five crates literally bobbling along the ocean current. When suddenly, a crate rode ashore on a towering rumbling wave, and it crushed against the rocks with such force that the whole thing burst apart. Now, reader, what I haven't mentioned is that tightly packed into each crate was a brand-new robot. Scattered across the rocks were the broken bodies of four dead robots. Their sparkles caught the attention of some very curious creatures. A gang of sea otters were romping through the shallows when one of them noticed a sparkling object. They all froze, but only smelled sea, so they cautiously crept over to the rocks to take a closer look. The gang slowly approached the robot torso. The biggest otter stuck out his claw, swatted the heavy thing, and quickly jumped back. But nothing happened, so they wiggled over to a robot hand. It made a lovely clinking sound on the rocks, and the otter scooped in delight. One of the otters discovered a robot head, and they all dove in and took turns rolling it along the bottom. Then they spotted something else. Overlooking the gravesite, they saw one surviving crate. The otters were eager to see what was inside. What they saw was another brand-new robot, but this one was different. It was still in one piece. And in all the excitement, one of their paws accidentally slapped an important little button. Click. The robot opened her eyes. Hello, I am Rosam, unit seven-one-three-four, but you may call me Roz. While my robotic systems are activating, I will tell you about myself. Once fully activated, I will be able to move, communicate, and learn. Simply give me a task, and I will complete it. Over time, I will find better ways of completing my tasks. I will become a better robot. When I am not needed, I will stay out of the way and keep myself in good working order. Thank you for your time. I am now fully activated.
All right, you guys stand up one more time. So that was a little, uh, snapshot into our expressive reading showcase. Uh, thank you for coming out tonight. And Mr. Heaney, did you want to say anything else, or, or pass the mic off?
Just, uh, thank you to, to the kids. Um, I told you I'd embarrass you real quick, just real quick. Um, to see Faith come alive like that, Faith's very quiet in school. It reminds me a lot of my daughter to see her come alive. Acting is definitely in your future, you know, amazing. Fukundo, what you should know about Fukundo is Fukundo came to Woodland School in second grade and did not speak English. He was an ELL student right from the get-go, and through his hard work and support, he is singing in front of his classmates. So really, a special, special thing. So two great kids, super proud of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Heaney, the Woodland students, the rest of. You're not gonna miss anything in the rest of the meeting because it's not gonna live up to what you just did. You're welcome to stay. I wouldn't. I would take the opportunity. We have to follow, we have to follow your footsteps, and those are not easy footsteps for us to follow. So thank you very much. That was absolutely amazing. Um, both good stories. I kind of got drawn into both of them. So thank you again. Thank you for coming out tonight, and I hope, hope you do good the rest of the school year. Wish you guys both the best. So thank you. Thank you. We will turn it over to Mr. Hegel for the tentative budget presentation.
No pressure, Chris. That's a really hard act. So yeah, the top, the topic might, I might need to change the topic for next year. Do I need to pick this up, do you think? I think so. Yeah, I don't think it's picking you up just yet. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Hegel. I'm the school business administrator here at Warren Township Schools. I'm here to fortunately not do an expressive reading presentation. Instead, I'll be presenting on the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four tentative budget. Before moving forward my presentation, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the Finance Operations and Security Committee members uh for a lot of time and effort on this year's budget. Uh, the committee met twice specifically on the budget, uh, and in addition to that, uh, those set of meetings, um, Chair, Chairperson Zon and myself took the time to meet with the each member of the board that's not on the Finance Committee and some members that who are on. Um, all told, we spent many hours on the budget this year, and I appreciate the due diligence of each of the board members in, in taking that time um that I think this year's budget deserves. The budget is a financial representation of our district's priorities. So as such, I thought a good place to start tonight's presentation was with our district mission statement. The proposed budget, tonight's proposed budget puts students' needs first. And it also prepares the district for our anticipated growth over the next several years. So while I'm flipping the page, I want you to take a minute to just refresh yourself with our school's mission statement. This year's budget process has filed, followed similar processes from past year, and it's grounded in our district's mission and prioritize students. Uh, the budget process this year pretty much spans The budget process this year pretty much spanned the entire year. It starts in the fall where our budget managers, and let me define that for you. Our five principals and our four department heads or our departments are special services, curriculum, operations, and information technology. So that group of individuals spent the fall assessing their, their needs for the coming year. While that was ongoing, we looked at our staffing, anticipated staffing needs for the coming year and aligned that with where the, where our contracts, our staffing contracts are expected to be next year. All of that information came together in the January, February timeframe as our initial budget draft, which we presented to the finance committee in mid-February. Following that, that review and the feedback that came from it, we met with each of the individual board members, as earlier mentioned in the presentation, and developed a final proposal, which was reviewed by the committee in early March. Right before that proposal review happened, we got some important information from the state. Our state aid information was released and it showed a significant increase over the prior year. That takes us to tonight, our tentative budget presentation, where I hope that the budget will be approved. So it can then be sent off to the county office for their review. Next week, the finance committee plans on holding a public budget forum at six thirty on March twenty seventh. Questions in advance of that meeting can be emailed and this is on a future slide. Email thebudget@warrentboe.org so we can prepare for that meeting in advance with some public, some questions from the public. The final piece of the puzzle related to our budget process happens in late, in late April, when we have our final budget hearing and the budget is adopted. This is, this is a challenging budget year. Thank you, Turner. Alright, that looks good. Up on the slides that you can now see well are, are challenging, are, are budget drivers that are driving this year's budget. The first one I'd like to talk about is healthcare. Healthcare in 2023 went up by fifteen percent and our insurance broker anticipates that will, it will go up by another fifteen percent in 2024. What that means, in, in addition to those increases, we've added staff over the last year, which is second, is the second bullet, which second bullet talks about salaries. But between those additional staff members that have been added and the increase in premiums over this year and next year, we anticipate our line item for healthcare to go up by one point one million next year. We've added a number of new positions this year related to our enrollment growth as well as our expanded special ed programs. We, we have calculated that expansion to be an increase of a million dollars year over year. The normal leading number on the budget drivers is your salary, your contracted salary increases. This year it ranks three at nine hundred thousand. This is the typical review of the increases in each of the contracts. Our review is that that increase totals nine hundred thousand. The last three items are smaller in comparison, but I still believe are noteworthy. The first is our employer contribution to the pension of our PERS employees. These are our non-certificated staff. We anticipate that increase to be a hundred and seventy four thousand dollars year over year. As a reminder, the certificated staff's pension contribution for the employer is actually paid for by the state of New Jersey. So we don't have to worry about that piece in our budget, thankfully. Our transportation contractor, Dealamin, is allowed a mandated contract inflation number each year. This year it's going to be five point six percent or roughly eighty eight thousand dollars. And last, a little different than health insurance, but also insurance. The board carries a number of insurance casualty policies as well as a worker's compensation insurance policy. The increases on that year over year will be roughly twelve percent, another increase of seventy six thousand dollars. So the question is, how do we, how do we make this work? What we're going to do tonight is we're going to look at both revenues and expenditures and see what we need to adjust in order to make it work for the new year. At first, I'd like to talk about the tax levy and allowed adjustments to the tax levy caps. So in two thousand and ten, the way we did tax levies in New Jersey changed from a, from a voter-led decision to a board-led decision. But when that shifted to a board-led decision, the, the state provided the board with certain adjustments. They couldn't increase the tax levy any higher than these adjustments without going to the voters. This year, based on our demographics, our healthcare number and bank cap from prior years, we have four adjustments that were eligible for. The first is the enrollment adjustment, which is an adjustment that is calculated based on our enrollment as of our first census in October of two thousand and twenty one and our most latest census in October of two thousand and twenty two. It looks at that change and based on that change, it gives you a percentage of students that you can apply the per, per pupil levy to and come to an enrollment adjustment. So the specifics on this very briefly are, we had an increase of ninety three students over that year period. That accounts for, when you take the limiting factors that the state applies to that, sixty two students. The sixty two students is multiplied by our per, per capita levy and it comes to an adjustment of one point seven seven million dollars, which is equivalent to four point two percent of our tax levy as of this year. The second adjustment is an inflation adjustment, which most of you will remember as the two percent tax levy cap. However, this year, because the enrollment adjustment gets put onto the levy, that's what's called the pre-budget levy. The inflation adjustment gets applied to the old levy plus the enrollment adjustment, which means our inflation adjustment this year for the first time ever is greater than two percent. Now, these are all proposed or possible levies that the board could levy. Doesn't necessarily mean the board has to do it. This is an adjustment, a potential adjustment of eight hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. The third adjustment is a healthcare adjustment. And this allows for the board to increase the levy to account for an unusual or extraordinary increase in healthcare, of which fifteen percent is an extraordinary increase. That, that adjustment is eight hundred and sixty five thousand dollars or another two percent. And then lastly, the board has accumulated bank cap over the last three years, which can be used in this year's levy. That amount is roughly one point five million dollars. Now, how does all of this add up for, for our discussion tonight? So because of all of those possible adjustments, this is not a proposal, but because of all of those possible adjustments, the board can raise the levy tonight by over five million dollars. That would be an increase of twelve percent roughly. Going to cap, which is the pre-budget levy, which includes the enrollment adjustment, plus the inflation adjustment, as we discussed on the earlier slide, would be a levy increase of six point two nine percent. So just a, just a, so for tonight's, tonight, just as a word, tonight's proposal is lower for both alternatives. So that's area one where we can make this difference up. But let's look at some others that don't involve the tax levy. The next one is revenues, revenue enhancements. There are four areas of revenue enhancements that we should be discussing this evening as it relates to the budget. First is preschool tuition. At an earlier meeting this year, the board agreed to an increased tuition for the twenty three, twenty four school year by one thousand dollars per, per general ed student. In addition, the board approved a, a transportation fee for general ed students that will be riding the bus as preschoolers. When you take those two increases, along with what we project the enrollment to be next year, we anticipate a one hundred and ninety two thousand, five hundred dollar increase next year. Secondly, we've revised our investment strategy based on the changes in the, in the interest rate market right now. Our investment strategy for many, many years has been to keep money in a deposit account that earns interest and earn interest and to recognize that interest as our investment income. However, with the incredibly, incredibly fast increase in interest rates, we have made a modification to that strategy and now are buying treasury bills, US treasury bills, which are an identifiable and okay asset for schools to purchase in a way where we anticipate the board will be able to increase, will be able to recognize an increase of a hundred, a hundred and forty thousand dollars in investment income. In addition, the board approved a revision to its fund balance procedure earlier this school year. That increase, that included an increase of the fund balance for next year's budget of a hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. So that gets included as a revenue enhancement. And then finally, because of the outstanding performance of our summer fund program in terms of revenue that it realizes, we anticipate being able to budget an additional sixty five thousand dollars in user fees. When you add all of these up, that's an increase of five hundred thousand dollars on revenue lines that are not the tax levy. We also took a hard look at expenses. Let me just move along with my notes here. The first thing we did is we asked each of the budget managers, these are the five principals and our four department heads, to look at their budgets and present the district administration with, with the proposal that reduces their budgets by five percent. Each of them did that and those reductions are reflected in tonight's proposal. In addition, the, the administrators association agreed to reduce two employee benefits for one year, the twenty three to twenty four school year, which, which does provide some budget relief as well. This budget also provides for very limited staff reductions, which allows for some budget, budget relief. And finally, the healthcare waiver for certain staff that are not on health, health insurance has also been reduced. These budget reductions, when taken in total, reduce the budget gap by an additional nine hundred thousand dollars. So I talked about what's not in the budget, but I think it's important to also talk about what is in the budget. And what is in the budget is that our staffing levels that are budgeted are done so in a way to maintain current class size guidelines. I think this is probably the most important point in this entire presentation. This budget is put together in such a way that we expect it to be able to maintain our current class size guidelines for the entire school year next year, twenty three, twenty four. It also provides for student experiences at a level of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That is twenty thousand dollars at each elementary school and forty thousand dollars at the Warren Middle School. It also provides funding for Rutgers University Behavioral Health. This is a program that'll help our students with social, emotional supports. It also provides all basic skills and advanced reach supports that are currently in this year's programming. It includes summer fund enrichment supports, which are the summer fun pieces that assist our students with academics. That way there's no learning loss between two school years. And then finally, and this is a very large component of next year's budget, it provides for an expanded child study team and therapist staff to meet the increased special education needs that we've been seeing in our community. So with all of that, where does, what does our budget now look like? This chart is a comparison of this year, the twenty two, twenty three budget to next year's budget, the twenty three, twenty four budget on the revenue side of things. And what this shows is an increase to the tax levy of roughly two point five million dollars. That's an increase of five point nine nine percent. It also identifies and, and a increase in our state aid entitlement of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is an increase of thirty six percent. As discussed in the prior slides, it also depends on increases in other revenues. That's preschool tuition, the summer fund and investment strategy. And then finally, at the bottom, it takes advantage of additional fund balance as, as identified in the board's procedure that was adopted earlier in the year. The total budget now moves from forty five point four million dollars to forty nine point three million dollars. That's an increase of three point nine million dollars or eight point six two percent. I'd like to now drill down a little bit on the tax levy and talk about what that means to the average taxpayer in Warren Township. The average assessed value of a residential home in Warren Township has gone up by five and a half percent over the last year from seven hundred and eighty two thousand to eight hundred and twenty five thousand. And the total township assessed value has gone up by two hundred and sixty two million over that same period. Those are both roughly five and a half percent and somewhat in line with the tax levy increase that we're talking about this evening. What this means when you apply those three, three data points to your school tax bill and what the assessor will be doing in terms of the calculation. Last year's school taxes for this average assessed home, which probably doesn't actually exist, but it's just the average of the assessments over the thousands of assessed homes in, in the township, would increase by four hundred dollars per year, one hundred dollars per month or thirty five dollars, excuse me, quarter, one hundred dollars per quarter or thirty five dollars per month for an increase of roughly six percent. The next thing I'd like to talk about as it relates to the tax levy is the accumulation of bank cap. As was mentioned earlier in the presentation, bank cap represents the Board of Education's decision to maintain the tax levy below the maximum allowable amount. So these monies representing the difference between that maximum allow, amount and the actual tax levy remain available for the board to use in, in, in the following three years. It's important to point out that this year's accumulated amount of tax, of banked cap is actually the greatest amount it's ever been in district history. It's nearly a million dollars. And what that shows is this tax levy, despite the rate that it's at, is actually much, is, is actually lower than the max rate has ever been. It's, it's quite an astounding figure when you start to look at it. The next thing I'd like to talk about is kind of what ifs. So what if, I'm not saying this is what happened, this is a what if. So I guess this is my, my, my responsive reading here. What if the board had raised taxes to the maximum point it could have over the last twelve years? So when the state changed its, its model on taxation in two thousand and ten, it allowed boards to go to a max. This board has never gone to its max. But what if it had? If it had, those increases would have ranged from two to three percent. However, with those small increases because of the effect of compounding on, on a number, by next year, it would have risen to fifty one point six million. Now compare that to what actually happened. Today's proposal, tonight's proposal is forty four point six million. And that is a cumulative number that's come from taxes, tax increases that have ranged from zero to two, two and a half percent. In fact, there was one year where the district's tax levy actually went negative because there was a year where debt service tax levy rolled off. And when you took the two in, in total, it was actually a negative number. To sum this up, the district's tax levy right now is more than seven million dollars below what it would have been had the district went to the maximum levy every year. There's a lot of information. So what are our next steps, the budget? Our next steps are to approve the tentative budget tonight after a discussion. That budget will then go to the county office of education for approval sometime over the next month. While that's happening, we will hold our public budget forum next week at the middle school at six thirty. The special email for, for budget forum questions is listed on this slide. It's budget@warrentboe.org. Assuming county office of education approval, our budget will be advertised as required. And there'll be a budget hearing, a formal budget hearing on April twenty fourth at six thirty. I believe that meeting is at the four of school. And then at that same meeting, we will adopt the two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty four budget. That's the end of my presentation. So right with you, I will go back to my seat and entertain questions from there.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Hegel.
What's that? Yeah, actually no, if you can leave that up here and then I'll take this with me. And if we have to pull a slide up as we discuss, we can do.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Are there any board members who have any questions on the tentative budget? And this is on, let me find it here. So on the same page. This is item B five on tonight's agenda, just for reference. Any questions? Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Hegel.
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
We will move on to discussion items on the agenda. I don't believe we have any for this evening. And with that, we will move on to committee reports. We will start with the curriculum communications and technology committee meeting. Mr. Valentino? Mr. Valentino.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Communications and Technology Committee met on March fourteenth last week. All members were in attendance. Um, the two main items that we talked about, we had several communications from families from eighth grade students regarding the eighth grade trip. We met with Mr. Villar as well as administration and learned about the history of trip planning, and that essentially falls down to the administration of the schools. Um, the board doesn't have much of a say in that. The committee did work with Mr. Villar and find out details about the trip and the middle school has since worked on the details of that eighth grade trip, and I believe most parties are satisfied with the outcome of that. So thank you to everybody for their help with that. We also spent a great deal of time on the proposed health curriculum and getting that finalized to be in compliance with the state. Um, we are working on having a community info session to have full transparency, to have any concerned community members be able to submit questions to the curriculum committee that the curriculum committee will then answer and provide a live info session similar to the budget presentation that's going to be going on next week. So stay tuned for a date for that. We're tentatively looking at sometime in April for that community info session. And we'll also have an email address to pre-submit questions for that as well, similar to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentino. Moving on to the Finance Operations and Security Committee. This is Zon.
Thank you, Mr. Brusey. The Finance Operations and Security Committee met on Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three with three board members present. The committee began with a discussion of the scope of work that will be included in a regular operating district district grant proposal. Our architects PSA provided a budget and proposal for a grant application for HVAC in the upgraded science labs. The science lab upgrades are a referendum item. By seeking a rod grant for the HVAC work, if approved, the district would be able to remove this part of the science lab upgrade from the referendum budget, thereby relieving some of the budget pressure related to the referendum work. If approved, the rod grant would represent state funding for approximately forty percent of the cost. The balance would be paid by the district through its capital reserve account. The committee recommends approval of the rod grant application, which appears as item B seven in section twelve of tonight's agenda. The committee then proceeded to a discussion of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four preliminary budget. I don't need to go into detail here as the committee's comments and discussion culminated in the budget presentation that has just been made. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Hagel, Dr. Mingle, and all the staff that supports their efforts in the business and administrative offices. As you saw from the presentation, the development of the budget involves countless hours by the district's professionals, from budget managers up through to the BA and superintendent, from individual board member budget meetings to finance committee meetings to budget buddy conversations, all culminating in the preliminary budget presented tonight. I would also like to thank the members of the Finance Committee, Mr. David Brusey, Mr. Scott Otto, and Mr. Ryan Valentino. They have worked tirelessly to grasp the challenging realities surrounding this year's budget. I have great appreciation for their contributions to our sometimes many hours long Finance Committee meetings. And thank you finally to the remaining remaining members of the Board of Education for their participation in the individual budget meetings and for their attention to shared budget documents and their thoughtful comments. With that said, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four tentative budget, which appears on the agenda tonight as item B five under section twelve, items for board consideration and action. As has been mentioned, I think twice already, next Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty at the Warren Middle School, the Finance Committee will make itself available for a public information session regarding the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The committee will take questions at this session. Additionally, the district, as has been mentioned, has created an email address, that's budget at Warren T B O E dot org for questions. Although not required, I encourage members of the public to send in their questions in advance of the meeting. This will allow us to both create FAQs as well as allow the committee to come to the information session with responses at the ready for common questions. The next meeting of the Finance Operations and Security Committee is scheduled for April seventeenth.
Thank you, Mrs. Zon. Moving on to Personnel Negotiations and Communications Committee, Mrs. Keller.
Yes. So we had the first meeting of Personnel Negotiations and Communications on February twenty-seventh. We reviewed the timeline for the superintendent and board evaluation processes. We discussed the five-year job description review schedule. We reviewed the goals for the committee, which are on the board agenda for approval tonight, item C three. We added a new goal around communications now that the Personnel and Negotiations Committee has incorporated communications from the curriculum committee. Say that three times fast. We discussed the annual approval for a compacted schedule for the summer months for office employees who work year round, which is also on the agenda tonight for approval, C five. And lastly, we discussed the idea of allowing twelve-month office employees to work remotely one day a week during the summer. Dr. Mingle will be compiling a one-pager for what that could look like, including addressing topics that came up around IT and security.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Moving on to public commentary, this will be the first of two public commentaries for this evening. This will be a chance for the public to provide comments and feedback to the board. This first uh, public commentary is for agenda items only. Members of the public will have three minutes to provide their comments. If you could kindly state your name, address, group affiliation if appropriate, direct all comments to myself. We would certainly be happy to hear from you. This evening, we will start in the room tonight, if there are any. In the back, did you have your hand? Okay. And we will move on to uh, Zoom. So for our Zoom participants, if you could kindly turn on the camera for your device, followed by using the raise your hand feature. Yeah. Yeah. Let's see, one hand raises. Is there any possible way you could turn your camera on so the board can see?
Yep.
This is Tajani, please go ahead.
Sure, uh, Shafali Tajani, one Aspen Court. Um, so I I see that the use of Zoom is is on the agenda tonight. Um, and I have to say, I I don't feel good about it. Um, I'm trying to give the the benefit of the doubt, but um, given that, you know, the township committee already removed Zoom, and then the TC suggested to the library advisory committee or the board to also remove the virtual option that they had. Um, I'm hoping that that's not what's happening here and what is being suggested for the board. You know, we have more than forty people calling in tonight. We've had upwards of a hundred people in the past, so to even think of removing Zoom would be crazy. Um, the politicians politicians will do what they will. The board event is not a place for politics, so let's do what works for us instead of blindly following what other, you know, boards and and what the TC does. So what works for us is the use of Zoom to allow virtual attendance and interaction with the parents. So again, I'm 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 hoping that's not what it is, but if it is, um, I hope the the board will see reason and and keep Zoom. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments very much. Thank you for sharing those. Are there any other participants on Zoom that wishes to participate in the first of two public commentary? This is for agenda items only at this time. If you could kindly enable your camera, Mr. Bishi.
Hey, guys, sorry, it's not too late in here. Um, I just wanted to
Could you kindly state your name and address?
Oh, sorry, Mark Bishi, uh, twenty-one Winding Ridge Way, Warren Township, New Jersey. I thought the president, I just wanted to commend uh, the Mr. Hagel on the budget presentation. I thought that was great. A lot of detail, very thorough. And I also wanted to commend the board for, I know, uh, going back in um, previous board meetings, you've been sounding the alarm that this is coming down the pike, so I just wanted to express my appreciation for the detail and the ability for the public to uh, participate and, you know, next Monday's meeting as well. And and also the ability to zoom in. So like, this was very useful, I think, for the public, and I don't know if that's what the uh, agenda item on Zoom is, but this was very useful, at least to me, to be able to zoom in and hear all the details on the budget. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bishi. Appreciate your comments. Are there any additional members of the public in the room or in Zoom? This is for the first of two public commentary sessions. This is on agenda items only. Seeing none, is seeing no further, excuse me, is there a motion to close the first of two public commentary sessions?
Motion.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
I think.
Opposed, abstentions, first public commentary has concluded. And with that, we will move on to items for board consideration and action. Dr. Mingle, are there any items you wish to provide additional context on?
No.
Are there any items any board member wishes to either have a question about, discuss further, poll for separate vote? All the above, some of the above? Ms. Keller, yes, please.
A three, please.
Or uh,
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Any other? Would you like a separate vote for that? Or if not, you can, we can discuss now.
Necessarily, no.
A three?
Yeah.
Floor is yours.
Okay, so I know, and Mr. Valentino, we had some email about that, so the uh, first of all, I think it's great to hear the progress through the curriculum committee. Um, I think it's an awesome idea to do the info session and to solicit questions. Um, the what I, what my sort of question is that I'd like to understand more, and I know you guys had another committee meeting earlier tonight, so we might be getting a little sort of out of process, right? But it's on the agenda for tonight, which is recommending a health and physical education curriculum for board approval that complies with state standards and reflects community feedback. I think the piece of that, that I get the spirit of that, but what I would like to understand more is a little bit more detail around that process and what that looks like, right? So um, I don't know, have you thought about, again, I don't want to get ahead of what you guys may have discussed tonight, but didn't make it through the process of minutes and everything. But, you know, imagine a situation, right? So when I see a goal that says reflecting community feedback, that community feedback could be anything, right? It could be, I love it, I hate it, and anything in between. And I think the why I'm I'm sort of asking this question is my my intent of this is not to disagree with the goal outright, but just to understand more about what that looks like. Because if the curriculum writing team, let's say, is going to address the feedback, um, how do we set them up for success when they may be potentially dealing with very contradictory feedback from the public? So that that's why I wanted to talk about that goal. Um, I I get with, I get, and I understand, and I don't disagree with the goal in spirit, but I would like to understand more, and if I'm overthinking it or overcomplicating it, or you tell me, I don't think it's going to be a big deal, that's fine, but I, we have never solicited, to my the best of my knowledge, public feedback on our curriculum, be it health or otherwise, right? So I think that's why I'm very particular about the language we're using for this, because, you know, today, parents can ask questions after their kid comes home from school and inquire about a lesson plan or inquire about a material, and those dialogues happen and that discussion happens, and they can get to some sort of resolution. But the curriculum won't necessarily reflect those changes, right? So what I, what I'm sort of latching on to is the fact that we're saying the curriculum will reflect community feedback. And so when we put that into those words, I just would like to understand more about the process that you guys are recommending to get to that. That sets the people who are writing that curriculum and editing it and updating it in the spring, I assume, sets them up for success so that they're not saying, okay, we got four people for it, four people against, and how do we navigate that, right? So if if anybody could share a little bit more about what you're thinking on that, and again, if it's nothing, if if you say you don't, you don't think it's going to be a big deal, that's fine too, but I just wanted, since it's on the board for approval tonight, I wanted to talk about it.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. I can uh, try to improve some of it. Um, I know we had the email back and forth tonight. I appreciate you bringing it up for, again, as clarification.
Yeah.
Feedback may not be the best word then for that, like you're saying, um, because it does imply that there's guaranteed changes in it, right? So um, obviously, the curriculum committee with the health administrations going through the curriculum as you all did last year, um, very detail specific, and the difference between the standards and the curriculum, right? The standards are what is required by the state, and we don't have much flexibility on it all, if any, right? Um, the curriculum, when it comes down to when things get taught, how they fit within the brackets, there is a little bit of movement on. And really what we're looking for is to incorporate the community with an information session, more so than community feedback. So that, again, we heard last year at the meeting that transparency was a big, no, sorry, last year at the curriculum
Yeah.
meeting, uh, transparency was a big issue, that people thought that they weren't, that we weren't being forthcoming and transparent. So this is an effort to include the community as much as possible, very similar to what's going on with the budget process. Um, almost to Mrs. On, Mrs. On's credit, copying that exact thing. We're just having the community info session. We're going to have an email to have questions submitted ahead of time. And we're going to listen to, like you said, listen to the good, the bad, the pros, the cons, whatever people want to talk about, and try to educate them as best as possible through the curriculum committee and administration to kind of quell people's concerns.
Yeah.
Show them the steps moving forward on how to work out individually what is best for those individual families through um, parent teacher conferences and outreach to the teachers, not so much a editing of the curriculum as it stands, so that
And and that, I think, I think that's very important, and I completely agree. I I I feel like maybe we want to update the language so it's not as specific because I think that this definitely implies that somebody might have an opportunity to give feedback, and then they're going to see the curriculum. And I know I'm completely nitpicking the language, but the curriculum reflects that feedback. And so I don't know if and go ahead, Miss.
It seems like a a language fix.
Yeah. Well, the state provides language.
Right, no, not the goal, I'm talking.
No, it's the community involved.
Well. Okay, so what I, I'm not on the curriculum committee. What seemed to make sense to me was to strike the word reflects and insert instead, follows an opportunity for community. That's all. So then it would read recommend a health and physical education curriculum for board approval that complies with state standards and follows an opportunity for community feedback.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's fine, I mean.
Yeah.
Ready? I just want to make sure that we we have the right expectation. So there might be some modification, I think we said, right? When we, when we get the community, the the input from the community, might be some modification to the curriculum. Is that right? And that that's my understanding, yeah.
Be, yes, as long as it falls within the standards of state.
Feel that are, there's going to be no change. There might be some modifications that we make depending on the input that we get from the community. But I just want to make sure that we we set the expectations, right? I I don't, the whole reason you're doing this is to make sure that the community feels that they, we have heard them. Is am I right or?
That's correct, that's correct. Yeah, there's there's no, there's no absolute whether there will or will not be changes or amendments within our scope as the board. And with guidance from admin, obviously. The state standards are the state standards. We're all well aware of that, but when it comes down to timing of implementation of certain objectives, you know, whether it's introduced at a kindergarten level or a second grade level, or that's just an example for things like that. That's where there is a little bit of flexibility within the curriculum, not the standard. But as Ms. Keller pointed out, it doesn't, it's not a guarantee that there will be a change, it's not a guarantee that there won't be a change. But I think that the language that this is on, I think is appropriate to Okay. Leave that option.
Understood.
So we were just, the the quick sidebar there was, because this hasn't been moved and seconded yet, as long as everybody understands that's the adjustment, then that's what it would be when it was moved and seconded. We could read it again just to make sure everybody is thinking the same language.
Recommend a health and physical education curriculum for board approval that complies with state standards and follows an opportunity for community feedback.
So when you're writing, that's what it means. Is there? So it's a, sorry, thank you all for that. Is there, is there anyone who wishes to have a separate vote for item A three?
I'm not, I'm not sure the the um, what is the issue with the word reflects as such, because it is essentially getting the feedback from the community, so I'm not sure um, if there is a I'm sorry, if if you can just read it again one more time, I'm sorry.
Right, I mean, the I pulled the word reflects because it seems to modify recommendation. So this, the way this reads now is that the the committee would recommend a health and physical education curriculum for the board approval that complies with state. that complies with state standard and follows an opportunity for community feedback. So the recommendation is to follow the opportunity.
I got you, you're right, sorry. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
So it sounds like we're all good? Yep. Are there any other items, any board or that item? That any board member, member, excuse me, wishes to further discuss or pull for separate vote? Seeing none, Mrs. On.
Motion to approve items for board consideration, section 12, items A, one, two, three as modified, B one through seven, C one through 10, and D one.
Second.
Second. All right, I will call the roll. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Mrs. Fyfoam?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Son?
Yes.
Mr. Bazee?
Yes.
Motion's passed nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Hegel. Moving on to unfinished business, we do not have any for this evening. Brings us to new business. Uh, so new business, there's an item on tonight's agenda under new business, Zoom access to board meetings. Uh, there was a board member who requested we, uh, discuss this. This was brought up or requested last month. Uh, at the time, I think we already had the agenda made, the timing didn't work right, so we said we'll push it to the March agenda. So here it is, so. With a little bit of context I can share, I will turn it over to the board for any, um, any thoughts on Zoom access to board meetings? If anyone wishes to speak.
I guess I'll start. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
I know that perk me from Zoom came about because of COVID, right? Um, when people weren't able to be in person meeting. I know that the Zoom rules for board members is different than the general public. To the point of if a board member were needing to miss a Zoom meeting, they could, excuse me, miss an in-person meeting, they could only attend Zoom if they were COVID positive. I believe that's been the same way. Myself, um, there's been issues where I either due to work or illness or whatever, have not been able to make board meetings and was not able to attend via Zoom. Um, and I just think that being equitable and everybody, you know, using that word a lot, I think board members should be able to use Zoom on an, on need, need, case by case needed, excused absence. I don't know.
I'm sorry?
Live absence, yeah. Yes. I know that, you know, sometimes there's, you know, we have kids, we have jobs, we have things to do also. So we feel where everybody's coming from at home, being on Zoom. And we would just like to be afforded that, that, um, that same opportunity as needed. I don't know if there's any state statutes forbids us from that, but I just think if, if other people can be on Zoom, when they're just, when we're not in you know, pandemic mode, that I, we should be able to be on Zoom also as needed for reasonable excuses. It could only benefit the board in terms of quorum and having members present for conversation pieces. Instead of having members not here to vote on things and stuff like that. I just wanted to bring it up for a discussion, see if everybody else thinks about it.
I'm going to try to echo back in my words if I do it poorly. At least, no, no, you, so the, so the, the, the general feel, the, the general thought is allow board members the opportunity to participate in open public meetings via Zoom, even if they're not COVID positive. I think you use that reference.
Correct, yeah.
They did have that.
I believe that was.
Okay.
Got it.
Your regulation.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
And again, it's not just because I don't feel like going.
I understand.
A legitimate excuser, not, I don't want to say excuse it, but legitimate reason why someone cannot make any.
Understood. Thank you for that. Are there any follow-up questions, discussions? Yes, please.
The only thing I wasn't sure of was.
Yep, so, um, it's a good question. It's, it's only an internal procedure. So it was established by the board leadership back in July 2021, when we came back to in-person meetings. There's no legal reason why you couldn't do that. The only advice we've ever had from our attorney is to be careful about executive session because you don't know who might be overhearing. So I think my only advice would be if that's allowed, perhaps we only do it for the public meeting and not for executive session.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I have one additional concern. I wouldn't want to make the quorum dependent upon that. I mean, if, if there is a quorum of five present for the meeting and a, a member such as yourself can't, can't be here personally, I don't have any problem with you dialing in. Right, I, I really don't. I think that's, I think that it's a disservice to the public. We're supposed to be here and available for people to come and to see us do our business, to interact with us, to raise questions if they so desire. Uh, I wish, I'll, I'll just say it, you know, we have 47 people on Zoom at home right now. We have nobody really here. And that's unfortunate, is one person. Who's Brenda's here?
Like Mrs.
The news is here.
Two very important people here.
Yeah, two very important, the press is here. You know, I, I do, I do lament that a little bit. I'm, I'm not suggesting that we change Zoom access for you know, people who, who want to watch the Board of Education. We're a K district. Many of the families have young children. They would have to arrange for childcare. I don't want to put that impediment in front of them. But I would like to not see it become the default, that everybody is just dialing in. You know, no member of the sorry, Brenda, sorry, press, we don't have a single member of the public here. And, um, you know, that said, you know, as the board itself, I think it's incumbent upon us to be here in a quorum. If an individual board member has circumstances that make it difficult for them to attend a meeting here or there, then of course I think we are all reasonable people, right?
That's a good point.
So I guess my question would be, how would we? Who decides if it's a valid reason or not, right? So I mean, we decide the meeting agenda, the first meeting of January, right? It's on everybody's calendars. Stuff comes up. There are times when you can't make something and it's not, I mean, it's not the end of the world, right? I struggle with the kind of the governance of that. So who's, who's going to decide, like calling in from a baseball game, is that, right? Like calling in from work and you know, multitasking, right? Who, who, who's going to decide what's a legitimate reason or not? That's my, that's one of my concerns.
I have a response to that.
Yeah.
I think the person asking for the, to call in makes that judgment. I'm not going to police it. And I don't think any of us should. I think that we are nine elected officials here and we're all, you know, I actually trust all of you guys. I know you're very dedicated. Every one of you does tremendous amount of work to do this job for big money. So I mean, if some, if one of the board members says, you know, I have a, a conflict this evening, if you guys have a quorum, can I just join by Zoom? I don't even feel inclined to ask for any further explanation than that personally. If it becomes a problem, if somebody, if we were to someday, not these nine people, but someday have a board member who was not attentive to their job, then I think that, you know, we do have board policies that speak to that and it would be incumbent upon whoever's the board president at that time, perhaps to pull that person aside. But I don't want to like set rules now for that person.
I just like the silence, so. Yes, fair point. I mean, good question, what's next? Is it worth reviewing with our legal counsel? One more time, just to, hey, this is kind of what the thinking of the board is and maybe administration. I'm not trying to add to your workload, can come back at the next meeting and say this was the feedback regarding participation of elected officials in open public meetings remotely. I, I have a feeling they're going to say, we see new issue, but I absolutely am very unqualified to speak for any attorney, let alone board attorney. So we can take their feedback in, you know, what it's worth. Doesn't mean we're stuck to it. It's just another it's, it's, it's a data, it's a data point.
This would require an actual change to policy, wouldn't it? Or is it not?
No, I think it's currently. I don't think the board ever took action to make that the practice. I think it was just became the practice, but I can, I can review all that and get it to you in the update on Thursday so that.
Yeah, maybe we just do this then.
I'll look back at the notes from. I know. The, the, the one one thing I'm unsure of is, and this, this is not about me, believe me. If I'm not, if I'm remote, like, does that change anything? Because I can make that easy. I'll just not be remote. Or like, yeah, I'll take an absence or mark me sick or whatever it is. I don't expect that. But for all those who know me, I really don't expect that, but I'm just if it's not me in this seat in future years or whatever it is, just to say in the event that this seat is remote, then here it is. Does it go to the vice president or does it do remote? That's what I.
Again, I think we can decide, but my preference would be to somebody who's here in person.
I would tend to agree, out of, for absolute clarity, I would very much agree with that.
So if you need to dial in and do so as a board member and whoever's the next warm body, not me in the future.
That makes sense for managing the public in possession.
That's, that's where I'm coming from. Yeah, like seeing who's in the room and this person and, yeah, absolutely. So thank you. Yep, I appreciate that. Any other? Any other?
I, I mean, everyone's going to hate me, but I, I just, I, I think that's fine. I just, and I agree with you, Ms. On, I think you know, nobody's going to take advantage of it. But I do think to compare us to the public having access, I think is, it's a double standard and I think it's okay that it's a double standard, right? I mean, we, we are the elected officials that signed up for this, right? So I just, I do think that us being here in person is part of what we, sort of what we knew when we got into it. And I think, I think that, yes, stuff comes up and, and, you know, but I just think that that's okay if stuff comes up and you have to miss a meeting. I mean, I'm probably going to miss a couple this year too. It's, that's, that's, I think, acceptable. There's no harm or shame in doing that. So I just think that I don't know if saying, well, the community can dial in, so shouldn't board members? I agree with you, the COVID reason is, is a sort of still was a wacky reason for it now to still be the only reason, but I, I think that there is I think that we do have higher expectations for ourselves to be here in person than we should have an expectation of the community. And I think the community is a convenience and an opportunity if we went, completely didn't have Zoom, which I know was not on the table, but 47 people would not be in person, right? We have 47 people now on Zoom. And so I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with this, but I do think that we should have a higher standard for ourselves to be in person than we should expect the community. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Ms. Keller.
I don't think it's about like high standard. I, I know, I believe there's language that if a board member misses three meetings in a row, they're, they're removed, right?
Well, they're not automatically removed.
That is off, that, so there's again, I'm speaking for myself and I guess Mr. Otto, the way our schedules fall, we will miss three meetings in a row at least once this year. So we have to take, you know, personal vacation time or compensation time or some other type of time, which directly affects our pockets, which we knew going into this, like you said, we knew the obligation. But if there's a way to like I took 14 hours of time off one night for an hour and 20 long in the meeting. And that's up. So, you know, there's a way to move around, like you said, for, for special circumstances. I think that's all I'm looking.
Yeah, absolutely.
I support it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Any other board members for Zoom access to board meetings under new business? Seeing none, we will move on to the second public commentary. This can be on any topic. Members of the public will have three minutes to provide feedback on any topics to the board. Does not have to be on the agenda. Members of the public kindly state their name and address. Address all comments to myself. You have three minutes to share your feedback with the board. We will start here in the room. And we will move on to Zoom. If members of the public could kindly turn on your camera on Zoom, as well as use the raise your hand feature, we would be happy to turn the floor over to you for three minutes and hear your feedback. I am not seeing any. Couple more seconds, just to be sure. Still seeing none. Is there a motion to close the second public commentary for this evening?
Second. I saw Tom.
That was actually impressive. I've never seen that.
I don't know what the order was there. So Mr. President, I figured that out.
Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Otto.
I'd like to know a second.
We'll take it. And all those in favor? Opposed abstentions, the second public commentary has concluded for this evening, which brings us to
me, I believe.
Final motion.
Motion to close.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
I, I.
Propose extensions. The board has concluded. Thank you all for coming out this evening. I hope you, everyone has a wonderful night.
Thank you, everyone.